All right, I'm gonna call the school committee meeting to order for Monday, September 16th. We're at Appleseed, and if everyone can please stand and salute the flag this way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna read our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leinster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leinster. Having said that, we're going to open up our public forum. If you would like to address the committee, please come forward to the microphones, state your name and address for the record. Once again, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. And one final last time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. Having no one coming forward, we'll close that portion of our meeting, and we will move to public communications. Superintendent, there are no communications this evening? Okay. Before we go into superintendent report, do we have a student report? We do not. We do not? Okay. So, I'm sorry, are we having students?
And welcome.
And we do need to try to have students here to report, Principal? Thank you. Superintendent's report, then?
Sure, thank you. Welcome back. We are on day 14, and if anybody's interested, we're just slightly over 7% of our school year done for FY '20. As of Friday, we will be 10% done. It's actually important. So, we had one of the best opening days for staff, if not the best, one of the best for staff. We were able to celebrate students. We celebrated a member of our learning community, and we also celebrated our craft of teaching and climate and culture. And people left on that opening day just feeling energized and ready to go. So, I want to thank all of our staff that came back. It was a tremendous outpouring, and those of you that could attend, I appreciate that. We had at least half of our school committee there, and I hope you enjoyed it as well because it was quite, it was great. It was a lot of fun. We started with students, straight away on Tuesday morning. It's the first time, we did not do two PD days on Monday and Tuesday. We started with students right on Tuesday, grades 1 through 12. We brought our kindergarten in the second Tuesday, and we are up and running. Classrooms are full. It's business as usual. Night times are full with sports and events, and I'm already hearing about the homework, but it's fine. And then, last week, we embraced five open houses. The high school, we had LHS, CTI, and LCE one evening, and then we had grade 6 at Skyview and Samushead. So, well-attended, parents outpouring at all levels, so that was wonderful. We also received our new phone system. The high school and central office is completely up and running. Just a quick aside, that none of our extensions changed, but if you're calling downtown, if you just use the old extension, we have the number 1 in front of it. If you call the high school, they have a number 2 in front of it. And we actually reached out to the city. Northwest has had some problems with their phone system, and they are gonna support moving that piece of the project a year early. So, we're very excited to get our new system. It's safety first, and the phones, if they don't work, we can't get through. We've also been working on, our accountability data has come out. On Wednesday, there is a half-day school, September 18th. Lunch and breakfast will be served, and teachers will be engaging into a deep dive into accountability status. Coming in October, we will come forward to the committee and show you the growth and the potential in our areas of need as we make decisions moving forward. We're also celebrating this evening, I have four of our new principals here. I'd actually like them to come to the front, please. Right up here to the table. The year is off and running. Look at this. Would you like to sit? It's okay. You made the year's off.
What protocol is the fire circle?
So, it's nice to put faces to names. So, these are our four newest leaders in the district. So, to my left is, this is interim principal of CTI, Dan Beishan.
Hi, everybody.
We have Matt Steinberg, who's joining us from Haverhill. I always say you live there, it is what it is. He is the principal of Samushead Middle School. John Fantelet has joined us at LCE and has really taken on the transition and moved that program forward. And we have Doug Niebel, who has stepped up from assistant principal at Skyview, who is joining us. So, this is quite a bit of a new change to our leadership team, but a move in the right direction. So, I just asked each one of the gentlemen to come forward tonight to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about who they are. Great? Let's start then. Dan?
Yeah, so, hi, everybody, thanks for having us. I've worked at CTE for 20 years now. The last five years, I've worked as Dave Deanbacker's assistant, graduate of Fishburg State College. I also went through the Michael Leadership Academy 1 and Academy 2 to the Mass Vocation Administration Association. And I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to serve as a principal on the board and believe in your trust and keep it for the next few years.
Great, thank you.
Hi, everyone, I've met a couple of you already, but it's a pleasure to meet all of you in person. So, I'm Matt Steinberg. I, as Paula mentioned, came to Leinster from Haverhill. I was assistant principal at Haverhill High for seven years. Taught history for 11 years before that at Methuen High. And live in Lowell, still there, born and raised. And I think what's exciting about being at Samushead is the energy already that was there with the faculty. It's a great group of people, and they're really, really energized about what's gonna happen this year. We're already kind of hitting the ground running, and we're excited for what happens next. So, thank you.
So, I'm principal at LCE, Leinster Center for Excellence, and I started in education in the Department of Youth Services as a math and science teacher. And then, I worked at Southbridge High School as the chair of the science department for a few years before moving on to Narragansett High School, also as a science teacher, and then spent the last three years as assistant principal. I wasn't planning on leaving, but one of my former colleagues at Narragansett works for LCE, and she let me know that the position was open, and I looked into LCE, Leinster School District, and big-picture learning model, and I really just felt like this was the place for me. So far, it hasn't disappointed.
And Doug Niebel, principal over at Skyview, and as Paula mentioned, been assistant principal there for six years. Prior to that, assistant principal at a couple other districts for five years before that, so a total of 11. Like John was teaching science in the middle school grades before that in Stonemood-Woolburn. So, really excited to stay in Leinster. It's been a great stay so far. Really kind of turned into a new home for me. So, very excited to get the opportunity to stay at Skyview, to keep going with the work that we've already started, and to keep going with the staff that we've already built, and we continue to build. We've got a few new staff this year, so we keep adding to the group, and it's been a great kind of ride so far, and I'm looking forward to this next chapter.
So, I really wanted to bring the team forward because we do talk about a lot of the work that we're doing on the leadership level. We meet every other week. We are doing research-based book studies and looking at our lessons and our teachers and our practices all the time, and these four gentlemen have really stepped up to the plate and have jumped in. And we're not kidding when we said we've hit the ground running. Day 14 finished, and we are just revving up. We are moving very quickly to get this district where it needs to be. So, I feel very confident bringing this team on. We have now a staff of not only veterans, new, it's a very eclectic group with different ideas, but our goal is to take this program and run with it. So, I want to welcome all four of you to the team, and I'm loving the work that we're doing. So, welcome. And if any of you have any questions for them at any point in time, they're open. Anybody have any questions, Ernie? Great, welcome. Just concluding the superintendent's report, truly, as of Friday, we are 10% done with the FY '20 year. So, it's going so fast, and this cold weather, and, I mean, fall is here. It's really moving fast, and I don't know if it's my age, but we can't keep up right now. So, we are working very hard, and I have to say, our students already are in the throes of everything. So, kudos to everybody and their hard work. Thank you. Nona?
I came to opening day, and I thought it was fabulous. I thought Jerry Burke was right on with what he was saying. I go online, and I watch his videos. They just are so good.
It was standing room only, the walls were locked?
It was one of the best I've seen.
And I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but I know that there were teachers from other districts that weren't at their meetings so that they could be in our auditoriums. And they could not take pictures and post because they would've gotten in trouble. It was that good of a visit. But celebrating, you should've seen the students that came in and opened up the day.
All so cute.
It started there as a celebration of our, and it just really put our district in a different...
It was very good, very good opening.
It was fantastic. We do need to see that video at some point.
It was great.
We showed it. We showed it.
I'm gonna send it to... One other thing, just as a request, that all schools put their activities online on their calendar. I've gone online, and there's some schools that haven't been updated. And also, just a request that if there's something they really think we should be at, to shoot us an email.
And we have open houses this week again. So, tomorrow is Fallbrook, Northwest, and JA, and Thursday is Francis Street. So, if anyone can attend, please walk through. The parent participation has been outstanding, so thank you to the community.
And we encourage parents to attend because it's a wonderful opportunity to meet your child's teacher and really learn about the curriculum and what they're going to be doing for the year.
And ask those questions, right? So, ask those questions.
And it is truly a partnership between home and school, so we want to forge that.
Excellent.
All right, so we're moving on to report on opening day, introduction of new principals, which we've already done. Our next item on the agenda we're going to table because the finance committee was unable to meet last week, so we don't have the up-to-date information for that. So, we're gonna move on to SIMS data report?
Yes, Lori is gonna come forward.
Good evening.
Hi. Lori, would you mind, just for people, we taught these acronyms all the time. Would you mind explaining what a SIMS report is? Because we say it, but...
SIMS is an acronym for Student Information Management System. The Department of Education, DESI, requires us to provide information to them formally three times a year, so October 1, which we're all familiar with, March 1, and the end of our school year as well. They now have something called SIF. And I'm not the technology director, so I'm not exactly sure what that acronym is, but we are in contact 24/7 with the Department of Education. They can upload our information at any time that they would like. So, even though we formally report on those three events, they pull data from us at any time, usually somewhere around 1:00 AM every morning. They have that data from us. It was requested by the superintendent that we provide you with some reports. There may be more here than you really want to take a look at, but the information you have in front of you is from the end of June 2019. So, this is what would be considered our year-end reporting. There are a variety of pieces of information. I believe it's, at this time, at least 56 data elements that they pull from us regarding our students. They then also pull information regarding our teachers in a different set of data a couple of times a year, and information about our student achievement based on the students' courses that they're taking, their schedules, and their grades. So, there's a lot of information that we send up to them.
Does anybody have any questions for Lori? Nona?
First of all, I love this report, mainly because eons ago, back what I call the dark ages, I used to do this by hand. This was done by hand by every secretary in every school. So, I really appreciate that it's now online, they can snag the data and print it. But I do have some questions. I think you answered one already for me about what was listed as a dropout at Skyview, which really is probably a student that didn't show up at all that year, and we didn't know where they went.
Yes.
And unfortunately, they got to be listed as a dropout.
They're listed as a dropout slash student status unknown.
Right.
And you're right, we cannot have dropouts per se if they're under the age of 16. I will say that, under Paula's direction and with support from the Parent Information Center and Jen Monday, we have updated our procedure regarding students who may have sat with us at the end of the school year and then do not come back in September. And we are doing our due diligence, thanks to the secretaries in our school buildings and the guidance counselors. So, we've started that, this being our second week of school. If we have children, we are doing everything possible, from calling every person on the emergency list, asking our resource officers to go out to the last known address, calling down their friends in school to find out exactly where they may have gone. Unfortunately, there are other school districts outside of Massachusetts and outside of the country that don't require the same reporting that we do, and they may not be requesting records from us. I'll say it, New York City is notorious. If someone goes to New York, they don't care what we did here in Leinster. And we do have a lot of students who head back to schools in other countries. So, we still want to make sure that we know where they are, and we now have the procedure in place to document within our electronic system every piece of information we have about them.
There's probably a really good explanation for this, but I'm concerned that if we look at, like, at CTE, there were 146 seniors listed, total. Of that 146, 121 graduated. One was a dropout. Three received an attainment certificate, but that left 21 unexplained. And I didn't know where that 21, does that mean 21 are repeating the grade, or...
I believe that, I'll write it down to get you that specific information, but I do know that we request all of our graduating seniors to fill out a survey as to what their goals are and what they're planning to attend. We may need to do more diligence at getting them to complete that before they get their diploma.
I wasn't looking at those figures. I was looking at the total number of students who got listed at the end of the year for each grade, and I was just picking the seniors. And then, I was looking at the listing of...
Could you refer to me which report you're talking about?
Okay, you can take a look at the Leinster Center for Technical Education, 14A. Okay, you have a total of 121 up there under graduates, and you have three with attainment, certificate of attainment, that makes 124. And then, on the dropouts, you had one dropout, so that makes 125. If you subtract 125 from the 146 that you had labeled on report number, I think it's number four. Report number four has the total of kids for that grade, well, as for all grades, but first, you had 146 seniors listed on report four. So, what happened to the 21, you know, is, you know, I know there's an answer. I know there's an answer on why there's a...
And I apologize, I do carry a lot of numbers around in my head, but if you would allow me to get the specific information and bring that back to you.
Okay, so you have 121 questionable at CTE, one at LCE, and three at the high school.
I'll have the answer for that.
Thank you, Ken.
So, we have a couple of kids that are doing a fifth year, and in the system, they're always listed as seniors, and so that would be a couple of kids. And then, I do know that we have some kids at our audit district who are, again, continuing. So, the system lets us say oftentimes if they're still seniors, and so that could be...
That was gonna be another question on the...
So, we can look at those numbers and see.
Life skills students.
Sure, sure. So, I think because that number looks a little high, I have a feeling that that might be for some of that.
Right, I know there's an answer. I just was wondering. And I want to, from what I figured out, we have a 2.6% dropout rate, which is excellent. I think that's fantastic. So, I mean, like I said, I love this report. I like seeing it. I look forward to seeing the October 1 report. So, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Ron.
I was just, I'm just, I'm just a little curious. You know, when I was looking, English learner population, what does shelter mean?
Sheltering content for the students means that we're using the language acquisition skills that are given to us, and that's the term that's been used at the state and the federal level for adding in the language acquisition and language goals into the general content instruction. So, sheltering the content means adding in the language acquisition goals for the children who are learning the content at the same time that they're learning our language.
So, they're doing like two things at once?
They are.
And, you know, 'cause I was going through all the numbers, you know, and Francis Street has 123, yada, yada, yada. This is, I guess what caught my attention was, as I was going through all this, opt-out, what does that mean?
We do have some families who are considered to be English language learners, and they choose not to take part in any pull-out, direct instruction for English language. The parents ask that they be completely immersed into the general education classes. So, every year, they need to provide us with an opt-out letter so that we will still be in compliance with the state as far as their regulations, the amount of language service or instruction that they need to have.
And does that help or hinder the kids?
The parents are the first and best teachers of the children, and so we acquiesce to their requests when it comes to that.
All right, I, there was another, the two-way, what does the two-way mean?
That is an opportunity for instruction in, under the Massachusetts law. Leinster does not offer two-way programs. A two-way bilingual program would have children who are native English speakers and native speakers of another language, and they would be combined in one class, and they would learn both languages together. At this time, Leinster does not offer that opportunity. All of our programs are sheltered English instruction.
Did we at one time have that?
We did.
Long as ago, we did.
We did. And we, at the elementary level, we had a cadre that started out together, and then people moving in and moving out. We did not have enough students to continue with a class, and so, actually, the parents at the time were opting out into the general education program. So, I don't believe that we have enough at this time. We certainly look into it every year, Renee Koska's work works on that type of thing, and, you know, if that was something we needed to explore, we would.
Thank you, Lori.
All right, thank you.
I just have one quick question. So, on report 9A, where it talks about CTE by trade, does that include our students from West Boston? Are they in our numbers, or are they in your own numbers?
Good question. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that one. They are not our, let me get back to you.
Well, they're not, but they are.
They are.
And I'm thinking that this is gonna drive the foundation budget, no? I would think.
Let me look into that, because they do, they do come to us, and it's not a choice. They are tuitioned in, and so, forgive me till the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, we're gonna move on to the update on the summer hiring and human resource report.
Good evening, everybody. So, I was gonna provide a brief overview of district staffing at this point in time. And first and foremost, I just want to thank Wanda Toledo and Ann Pickering in the Human Resource Office. I think traditionally, we feel like the school slows down the summer, but in human resources, and specifically for those two professionals, it just heats up, and they did an incredible job managing a large number of employees who were added to our staff. And so, I just want to put out a thank to them. And then, also acknowledge the effort of the building-based leadership, and that I think the principals, assistant principals, and in many cases, staff members, had a collective process where they were interviewing candidates, and overall, they were extremely timely and well-informed decisions. We did our best this year. As soon as things were posted, you would see principals or building administrators scheduling interviews, and they went through a nice process, and I think glad applicants in as early as possible, so we were really in good shape to start off the school year. I was gonna go over just a couple of highlights of the report that we provided for you tonight. You'd see that we added 88 employees since we began hiring at the end of June. Just some things to note, the majority of those positions were filling existing or traditional vacancies, so like a 5th grade math teacher at Northwest. And if you also look, one of the interesting things is that more than a few of those positions or the people filling them aren't really current employees, they've just taken on a new role, which is nice, because what we're really trying to do is grow folks who are already working in the district either to enter into leadership positions or possibly take on a new role. And it shows our belief in, you know, growth and advancement. One thing you'll note is 14 of the positions of the 88 are designated as new positions. That's a little bit is a misnomer, in that only three of them that were identified last year through the budget are actually funded now through local funds and are new in that way. They were particular needs that we had in the district, including a school adjustment counselor at Northwest, a high school guidance counselor, LHS, and then there was a CTEI position instructor for electrical. For the remaining 11 positions, even though they're noted as new positions, they actually were funded through efficiency, so either they were grant-funded positions like health teachers at the middle school level, or in some cases, when an analysis done by the curriculum department or the superintendent or the business department, things were noticed, such as in middle school, we were spending money for a language through an online virtual program, and the cost of that program plus tutors that were necessary to administer it were actually more expensive than actually hiring teachers. And so, we went back to a teacher model, and we're able to add two teachers at the middle school level for language. And so, you know, another example would be that we added a first-grade teacher at Northwest, but we were also able to reduce by one kindergarten teacher because the incoming class wasn't quite as so large. And so, even though it looks like there were a number of positions that are added, it really is a reallocation of funds to support new district needs. Overall, where are we now? Well, there are smattering openings, but mostly it's because there have been some recent resignations, or there are some specialty positions that we're still looking to fill. But overall, I'd say we're in great shape. The teachers that have taken part in the induction program led by Renee Koska, and then also, they've all been assigned to mentors and are beginning their career in great fashion. they've all been assigned to mentors and are beginning their career in great fashion. So, we're really excited where we stand at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Jeff?
Jennifer? When you give this to us again? Will it include all of these again? You're just gonna add in?
Typically...
On the ones that are transferred? Several of them you have, that they're transferred, and then you have them listed on where they're at, but there's several that you don't have where they're at. Like, an example is, you've got Catherine Bro, who is replacing Lynn Spelios because she's transferred, but Lynn isn't listed anyplace else on this list to know where she went to. But there's several of them like that, so if you could fill that in? Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm just curious as to, just generalization, there's a lot of resignations here. So, are those people that went to, you know, that maybe took the job and live kind of far away, so they transferred closer to home, or, I mean, there's a lot of resignations here.
Yeah, you know what, a real, a real variety of reasons. We also, some of these people may not have been renewed at the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
And so, then they choose to resign as well.
I get it, okay, that's fine.
And do we do exit interviews so that we can kind of quantify?
We need to, we have not started, but that is a practice that we really do need to put into place.
I mean, I think that would just be helpful for our own verification and feedback.
Anybody else?
Thank you for, or to put this together?
Wanda Toledo.
Thank you, because this just makes sense, because there's so much movement going on. It's, I think it's important for the community to know, to be able to, the public saying, you know, bring it on people.
Excellent, thank you very much, Jeff, I appreciate it.
I assume this is a Excel spreadsheet? Could you, each time you get this, also just send us the spreadsheet and email?
Are your eyes hurt?
No. I like, well, the first thing I thought was I'd like to see it sorted by sort.
Right, right, right.
And I don't wanna have to print them off.
Right.
When I had the original, I can sort it by whatever I want.
And then just redline it for the additional ones, right? You just redline it for the ones, this would be, I wouldn't print it out.
Wanda is typically great about getting, we usually try to include with your packets, this level of detail, because we were actually looking for the specific people and the sheer number of folks that had been added, she had individually go through the files.
It should go down and be a much shorter list moving forward.
But absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from August 19th, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, any comments, omissions, errors? Nona?
Six D. You just need to put a 2 between motion and forward.
That's all. Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? And all carries? And the finance subcommittee did not meet, so I'm presuming we did not, we're not approving those minutes today. So, if we can have them on our next agenda, Chris, that would be helpful. We have subcommittee reports, we know the finance subcommittee was not able to meet, so there won't be any approval warrants either. I'm presuming you didn't address that?
So, we weren't able to address that.
Okay, so we'll put those on again for next week, or next meeting, rather. Policy subcommittee did meet today, Isabel?
We did meet. We did not go through all of the policies that we had slated to go through, therefore we didn't make a motion for the first reading, but we will probably be doing that at our next policy subcommittee and then bringing that up to the committee as a whole.
We went through the majority of them.
We went through the majority.
But they need to be tweaked.
Yes.
And I think it's helpful for other folks who weren't at the meeting to see the corrected versions.
Exactly.
So, they know exactly what they're voting on. Most of it was minor corrections.
Minor, very minor.
Okay. And at this point, we'll move on to action items. We have a vote for fiscal '20 financial budget number, which we are putting off because the committee has not met. We have a vote on the field trip, and that we can do.
So, we have major's classroom again this year, grade six of the middle schools. Last year was our first year doing this, and we have brought it back. I've got Jen Monday in the back, this is her passion and our heartbeat, and...
We used to do it many years ago.
Oh, it's tremendous. So, we worked with both middle school principals, and we have put it forth for approval this evening.
Vote to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Sue, anybody have any thoughts or questions? It's a wonderful opportunity. We encourage all sixth graders to attend if possible. So, without further ado, all those in favor? Oppose, motion carries. We have acceptance of a donation.
So, we have a $2,000 gift from MIT Starbase. They've been with us for a few years and to help our students go through an incredible STEM-based programming. So, I'm looking for your approval of that $2,000.
Second, okay. Any thoughts, comments? All those in favor? Motion carries, and thank you very much, very generous. Vote on city appropriation.
There's a letter in your packet from the head of facilities, Mrs. Shigerasi, about an emergency transfer switch that has gone out. They do not have an emergency backup right now, so if any major catastrophe happens, we might be in trouble over there, so we need approval of center appropriation to the mayor's office.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that vote.
Can I just ask one question? So, this is not a large appropriation, there should be sufficient funds within some expense account somewhere in your budget to handle $13,000 until free cash is certified?
Anything over $10,000, I need to bring forward here, so that's why we're bringing it forward.
Right, but there should be, I mean, we must, with four and a half million dollar increase in the budget, we must have increased our budget allocation for expenses for...
I mean, I think probably a lot of ours is pretty...
Is this not, isn't this capital expense?
Right, but you should have a capital item, line item in your budget.
I don't believe they do.
No, capital expenses are not part of our spending.
They are, they are. Below 200 and something thousand dollars, they are.
Well, maybe your point is it's an operating expense.
Right, I mean...
It's an operating.
We've always paid for things out of, I mean, big things we've had to help out with and certainly will, but I just don't know if this could be a pattern of every time there's a, you know, an expense needed for a capital improvement, whether there's gonna be a request of that. Because that's the way, the last couple of requests were the same sort of thing, which not a problem, but they're all small items, but I just, you know, I'll talk to the superintendent offline, but...
Because I don't know that we have the flexibility.
We should have increased our, you know, when we increased our budget, we should have put more aside for replacement, you know, things that happen during the course of the year, I mean, with all the facilities we have, things have been... But I'll chat with the superintendent offline.
So, in the meantime, we'll make a motion so that it's there?
Yes.
Because it's over the $10,000. All those in favor?
And let's get clarification on that, just, I don't know, you wanna ask, or somebody wants to, Glenn, you wanna ask, or something? What is the threshold for, for capital expenses for, you know, there are certain, there are certain parameters there, but I'm pretty sure it's like under $100,000 to $200,000. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, the next order of business under new and old business, I would ask for conflict of interest to be put on. So, for those, I'm gonna disclose my conflict, but just in general, people not only need to talk about it here, but they need to sign a form at the city hall for conflict of interest. So, if you haven't done that, please do so soon. So, I'll just start. My husband does the scorekeeping book slash clock for a variety of athletic leagues.
My son, go ahead, my wife is a teacher at high school. And my son, he provides services for the athletic team.
Make sure there's water and other things up there.
My mom is a teacher at Francis Street. My sister has served on numerous occasions, and I'm an employee of the Commonwealth. I'm a legislative aide for the state rep in Leominster, so that may come into conflict when talking about state policy in terms of funding.
Sue, Nona, you're the only two here without anything. We can't come up with anything, so... Okay, I appreciate everyone, and you should discuss.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, my daughter is an EMT for sporting events, and she also occasionally works for Creative Choices for an after-school program. That's only until January 1st, she's living with us, so...
That would be a loss, but good for her, yeah.
And so, as, just to refresh it, so as things come up, they change the law, and it's not just a financial interest anymore, it's just interest. So, if you have an interest, the best thing to do, just file a disclosure at the clerk's office, and that covers it. If it gets any deeper than that, call ethics, they always have an attorney on, you can always ask them, is this a conflict? Can I vote on, you know, the budget, or do I have to take and separate the teacher's budget, which I'm sure you don't have to, because it's a general overall budget, but as things come up, just don't get yourself in trouble, call ethics. But if there's any, even a slight inclination that a situation may come up, just go to clerk's office, file a disclosure, describe what it is, and you'll be fine. It's really not that difficult. But it is, it is an interest now, not just a financial interest, it used to be a financial interest. Now, it's pretty much, for them, it just pretty much covers everything, so they can, you know, if something happens, they can say, well, you have an interest in it, well, I drove by the school, I have an interest in it, right? And so, but it's pretty basic.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other old or new business? Just wanna remind folks about the conference coming up in November. I know a couple of us are registered, I don't know whether anybody else has changed their mind, but we do need to know that, you know, sooner rather than later. So, let Chris know if you are able to attend. Other than that, I don't have any other new or old business for myself. Anybody else?
Who's attending?
I think Ron and I.
Okay, 'cause I'm gonna go.
You are, oh, excellent, I didn't know that. Perfect, so did you, let Chris know so she can register you?
No, I don't know if Bobby will get a room, will he?
She'll get you, she'll get you.
You could go with that camping there, the field trip, the major's classroom.
Because we don't stay right after the conference.
And you could pitch a camping.
Okay, I'll go. I'll register you.
Perfect.
And my people register.
They'll find a room.
She'll double check.
Chris, what is that to register you? I didn't register you, but that's okay, because the last time you said you didn't wanna go. I registered three people.
Oh, who's the other person?
Me.
Oh, of course, Bob. I was thinking, of course you're going.
I just have one more thing. The, we're doing the pavement on granite and then around Northwest School.
Yay, Highland Ave, we're thrilled.
As long as people have patience, I know a lot of people leave their kids off, and it's crazy for 15 minutes, but it'll all be done over, so they ground it up. They did Highland Ave today.
They did Highland Ave today.
And they'll put a base coat down, they've got a good plan, they work really well. It's just inconvenient for, you know, a couple of days, but it'll all be done, and then they'll do granite, which will be easy to be done.
Yeah, I mean, we're absolutely thrilled because you took your life in your hands, or your car in your hands, because the street was very bad. I've lived there for 32 years, and it's never been paved.
Well, now you can skateboard down.
So, now we'll be able to just slide right down, yeah. Looking forward to being able to use it as a sledding hill.
So, just patience, that's all, just patience, it'll be, it'll be quick.
Thank you very much, anybody else? Otherwise, we need a motion to adjourn, so move, second?